Motion to have Treasurer Slavens, clerk for today?
I make a motion to make Treasurer Slavens the clerk today.
Support?
Motion made by Tanya Ganguly, Trustee Ganguly, and supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Treasurer Slavens, can you please take roll call?
Trustee Borninski.
Good evening. Good evening.
Evening. Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And would the Yak students like to lead that?
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Madam Supervisor, I motion with the amendment of adding G zero, which is consider accepting a grant from the State Disaster Contingency Fund and also a resolution declaring April 22nd as Earth Day in Canton.
Support?
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 26, 2024 and April 2, 2024?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we approve the minutes from March 26, 2024 and April 2, 2024.
Support?
By Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Okay, now's the time for public comment on agenda items only. Do we have anyone in the room? Questions on agenda items?
My name's Ali Husein and I'm Treasurer of the Youth Advisory Council.
My name is Arun Joshi and I'm a member of the Youth Advisory Council. We have some questions for you, for you all. This is number G two, John LaFever. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong. Is there a plan for funding beyond the pilot year? Oh, sorry. G six, John LaFever. How is safety being factored into the development, like lighting and emergency call buttons?
And for G 10, will cromboli replace trees that do not thrive? And is the lifespan of the trees being considered? Also for G 12, are there any alternative options that may offer the same data uploading service for a lower price?
Anyone else in the room for agenda items only?
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support?
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, our first presentation is on the sidewalk gap program. So are you going to be leading that, Charles? Or, okay, so we were introducing Charles LaRocque, our engineer, and he's going to talk about our sidewalk gap program.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Again, my name's Charles LaRocque. I am the township engineer. I've been asked to come in today and speak a little bit about our sidewalk gap program. So if I may, I will share my screen with a brief PowerPoint presentation. Zoom is not cooperating.
Trevor, it seems Zoom is not cooperating with this one.
Okay. All right, so again, this is just a quick presentation on the Canton Township sidewalk gap program. I'm going to run through sort of a brief history of what we've done over the last 20 years or so and then talk a little bit about what our plans are for this year and going forward. So as a little program history, in about year 2000, we started with our sidewalk repair program, which included filling gaps. So I guess very quickly, gaps obviously are kind of what they sound like. It's an area where we don't have sidewalk but would like to have it. It's not an existing sidewalk that we're repairing. It's a, an empty space where we need one. Typically, as we did even in 2000 and we've done since then and even to today, we target sort of high use areas. So those are typically around schools, parks, public safety buildings and other public buildings. On a yearly basis, we've done gap filling pretty much based on budgeting is kind of what it limits us. Construction season is short, but usually if we have enough money, we can spend it. So just very kind of quickly here, over 10-year periods from 2001 to 2010, we did about 28,000 feet of gaps. The 10 years after that, we were down to about 10,400 and over the last few years, about 1,500 feet of sidewalk gap. A couple examples here, you can see that, you know, we've got the, what's called a goat trail where a lot of foot traffic happens and there's no sidewalk. So we were able to fill that gap on Canton Center and Cherry Hill. Again, Canton Center and Cherry Hill, same situation. That should be a pretty familiar photo on the left. You can see Canton Center heading north towards Cherry Hill. In the Cherry Hill Village area, gap there in front of some residential properties that we were able to install sidewalk where we had none. These are just nice references for what we've kind of been working on. So here we've got our map that we had engineering put together over the last couple of years, kind of showing our overall needs for sidewalk gap filling. The red are the gaps. We have about 52 miles of sidewalk gap that we would like to see filled. It's obviously a lot, so we are chipping away at it. As I spoke about before, this map here shows pretty much school, all the schools in the township and then a quarter mile radius around them that we identified as sort of the highest priority. Again, you can see in red the gaps that exist around those schools. So that's kind of what we started, used as a starting point to fill, to fill gaps and areas to focus on. So right now for 2024, we have the MEDC grant, three quarters of a million dollars to fund our gap filling. We recently received proposals back from our consulting engineers and landed on Fishbeck, who we will retain to work on our design needs for some of these gaps. Engineering will be taking that to the board at the end of this month to get that work awarded to Fishbeck for design of those areas that, you know, require some engineering and surveying and, and some staking needs in order to get the sidewalk installed. So some of the projects that we are targeting, this one is already designed. We have acquired some easement from ITC as well as some private property owners to get a portion of this gap filled. There's a going, there's going to remain a small gap in the middle, but we're going to close in on it a bit with the hopes of the future, obviously, filling it. That one is designed. We have the ability to get that staked and our sidewalk contractor, we already have under contract, will be doing that work. He will also be doing Denton Road north of Cherry Hill. There's a, there's some gaps on kind of either side of Denton Road north of Cherry Hill there. Again, that's north of the ITC corridor as well. So that's kind of near the village, so we're excited to fill that gap as well. And then along Beck Road by our, our, excuse me, our golf course is quite a long stretch of, of Beck with no sidewalk that we plan to get installed, if not this year, next year. That requires a little bit more design work. That is the area we're going to have Fishbeck target first to get some plans together so that we can get that sidewalk installed hopefully this year. If not, that'll be one of the first ones we can get done next year. And then the other areas we have already that were, excuse me, that were part of the request for proposal that Fishbeck will be designing as soon as we have them under contract are shown here. As you can see, like I said, most of them are either around a school or a public building. Also our, you know, very new Zivvy Wise Park, we're going to do the corner there at Ford and Ridge for them as part of the sidewalk gap program. And again, you see the elementary schools and we also have some design work to do near the PSEF campus as well to get the gaps along both Joy and Canton Center filled in there. That is a very quick overview. I didn't want to belay a review with too many details, but I'm happy to take some questions. Can you go ahead?
Yeah, so my question is, we have been doing this discussion for quite a while now and the goal was to focus on the areas around the schools before, right?
Correct.
The priority was that. So why are we, why are we doing the construction this year on places that has nothing to do with the schools?
Well, so as where we picked it up this year, those areas were either already designed or didn't need any design because they're a very straightforward installation. All of the gaps around those schools are a bit challenging, so there's some stormwater implications with either ditches or culvert crossings. We also have, the majority of those require a bit of land acquisition, so we'll probably have our land consultant get easement from those homeowners so that we can put the sidewalk in. So it's, it's been in the sidewalk gap, or sidewalk gap plan that we, I believe, engineering published in 2021 or 2020, that we're finally getting around to being able to have the funding and the, and the other resources and staff to have those things designed, the land acquired, and then ultimately the sidewalk installed.
So will we have, from the $750,000, will we have anything left for these projects?
So right now, we have those three or four areas that our sidewalk contractor is going to do this year. We have unit prices. I don't have full cost on those. There should, between that and the design of those areas that I listed, there should be some funds left, but the, the expectation or the hope from engineering would be that as each year, as each year's budgeting gets done, we are budgeting more dollars towards construction and design and just kind of keep this going on a yearly basis.
So basically, while you're doing the projects that are already designed, Fishbeck is designing in parallel?
Correct, yeah. Right, 2024 is kind of, well, as we continue, every year will kind of be two-track like that. We'll have, we'll have pieces that are designed and ready to be built and then we'll also have our consultant designing next year's gaps to be filled. So that's kind of what we're starting now. We're going to fill those gaps that we can now as we wait for the design, land acquisition permitting to get taken care of for those other areas. If we sort of run out of construction season this year, we'll build it next year and then they'll begin, the idea will be that Fishbeck will then begin designing the next, next group of, of locations that, that we land on, that we choose.
I guess the question is, if we have warm weather through December like we have been, would they be able to kick out some of these school designs quickly and start the construction maybe this year?
So my expectations for them will be to get, we'll probably sit down and prioritize the order of design. That'll probably be based on, I don't want to call it easy, right, but like the most straightforward pieces that we can design quickly so that, yes, they are ready for construction this year. And if the weather cooperates and, you know, we can continue to pour concrete, then, then we certainly will.
So we have to get more funding for the sidewalks for this, our areas around schools because that didn't take priority this year because the funds that came in, I was hoping, because we have been talking about it for like quite some time now that the areas around the schools take priority, the areas under the school, around the school takes priority. And we are basically doing nothing about most of the areas that I think, except for probably something that's close to Cherry Hill Village, it's not really.
Yeah, Gallimore, Gallimore and then down Cherry Hill and Little... And you got to think, so the funding was already there for the existing gap project. The 750 is a separate project for around the schools. So it's kind of like we're doing two programs at the same time.
And I, I am also investigating the possibility of using some MEDC funding that we received for road construction to use for sidewalks. I'm still trying to work through contacting the state, the grant administrator, if we can use those funds for sidewalks. If we can use those funds for sidewalks, there, there's potential we're going to have a lot more money, but I have to get that, you know, that approval from them first because we have to spend those dollars appropriately, obviously.
Yeah, there, there was some money. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in on top of you, but we did, we did receive money that involved with Canton Center Road and there was also some other dollars that, that we received, quite, you know, two and a half million dollars that we're working through to see we can use those for, for sidewalks gaps. But there's some issues of, we're trying to work through MDOT with the, the grant administrator on it to make sure we're okay using it outside of Canton Center Road.
So what yours, so I'm trying to understand the 750,000 that we got from, you know, Senator, the help of Senator Dale and Paul Hankey is going towards the projects that are for this year?
Yes, because we know we have those dollars for sure for sidewalk gaps. Now, we, we think we might have some, quite a bit extra money to do even more work if we get the approval from MDOT for those dollars.
I should point out that the Denton Road sidewalk gap is near Workman Elementary.
Yeah, that, I'm saying that's the one, that's the only one that I see because probably, probably the back and the one near, probably that helps Dodson too. Okay.
I know it doesn't, it's not as, as glamorous, but the design part is, is necessary for us to build it and all of the design is focused around schools. So worst case, we'll be building that next year, if not some of it this year.
Okay.
Are you still able to share your PowerPoint?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I just took it off.
Could you go to that slide that showed the linear miles or linear feet? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Make this one? Yes. So it looks like it's kind of dropped off as far as how many linear feet we've done since 2021. And I'm wondering what would be the explanation for that because it's been a board priority. So I'm wondering, is it just money or is it not being able to get property rights or?
I would say it's a combination of those things. More likely, it's a, it's a budgeting issue. It had been, you know, a budget issue, so, you know, provided we have the budget, then we can certainly continue to build.
Right. Okay, so that's something that we need to work on as a board, I mean. Okay, and then could you go to the slides where you listed the projects, if you don't mind?
Schools, you mean?
Well, the different, so, I mean, I see quite a few schools on that list. And I know that you said these are for future construction, which, where are the ones that are the, where's, you had another slide that had ones that were probably going to be this year, right?
One was Cherry Hill between, from the ITC corridor to, to Little, that one, people are walking the road there.
Right.
Right, so yeah, so this list is, is going to be, I could safely say this list, all these locations will likely be designed by the end of, by the end of the year, if not sooner. Again, as we get them finished design, if we can get them built this year, we will. So those, I don't even want to call those, I mean, future might be misleading. I, my feeling is worst case, those will get built next year. And as far as 24 construction goes, yes, we had the ITC Cherry Hill location, or it's Cherry Hill east of the ITC corridor.
Okay.
Denton Road north of Cherry Hill.
Okay, so that, there's a school there.
And then around the, near the golf course.
It's, would this be on to Dodson? Both sides of the, of back on the east and west side because the golf course goes across.
I think it's only on the one side because on the other side, I believe, is the, is subdivision, so there should be side, mostly.
There is sidewalk going north of Central Park, that subdivision, yeah. But south of there, I don't think there's sidewalk.
Yeah.
But on the, on the east side, you're correct. There's not a sidewalk that continues all the way through.
Right.
And that does affect Dodson.
Correct.
Okay, so my, my thinking is, and I don't know if you, you know, if this is possible and I assume it depends on what has been designed already, but I would think for the schools, the best time for them would be during the summer for this to be done. So I just would like that to be taken into consideration.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. Yeah, it's always schools, mail, and trash is kind of what we, what we worry about during construction of roads or sidewalks, so definitely agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Do you have any questions, Tanya?
No, no, just good presentation and hopefully we can get a lot of these done this summer. That would be great.
That is my hope as well.
And I know you're talking about under this, around the schools, you have a lot of drains to move or drains to go over. I know that's more difficult. I know like down by Crescent Academy and by the high school on Canton Center, there's a lot of drainage areas there.
Yeah, there's definitely some challenging locations, but I think with, with the grant funding and future funding and the ability now that we have a consultant on board that we can year over year ask to do the designs, I think we'll be in pretty good shape to get a lot of it. Like I said, once we kind of get moving on it with design and construction happening simultaneously each year, we should be able to start making some impact on that 52 miles.
So didn't we have, so we had 750,000 from Senator Paul Hankey, but then didn't we allocate another 500,000 onto the budget for sidewalk gaps?
I don't, I don't know that there was an additional budget allocation, but as, as David said earlier, about two and a half million dollars of the funds that came for Canton Center Road were earmarked for sidewalk gap closures as well. And that's what we're in discussions with MDOT about right now, that David referenced earlier.
Maybe the regular budget item is 250.
There, there is a line item for sidewalk repairs in the budget, but initially there were some ARPA funds that were set aside for the sidewalk gap program, but those funds were re-appropriated once we received the legislative earmark and that was via board vote.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Erica, how is it going out there with the, the repairs? All right, thank you for the presentation.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Youth Advisory Council.
So the Youth Advisory Council has been working on our 2024 grant cycle. The due date has passed and we're reviewing our grant applications on the May Yak meeting, May 6.
Another thing the Youth Advisory Council has done is we've made, we have our first volume, volume on issue whenever newsletter. This time, I'll, I'll pass it out, but this, this newsletter is especially important as we talk about the Kids Against Hugger, volunteering service we do. We talk about the grant cycle itself and the youth needs assessment and the results that came with it.
So where's your grant? Where does it distributed at? Where could other people see the newsletter? Is it online?
And the last thing we'd like to talk about is the DEI for March, so specifically for months, March and April. March, we had, we, the month was dedicated to St. Patrick's Day where we like talk about like the, like the history behind it and like the ideas, like as, like what different elements, like the leprechauns and the rainbows and the gold pots, colds where they came from. And for the activity for the youth, we, we made a scavenger hunt where they would walk, walk around the block and try to find some elements or like different like items that you'd particularly find on St. Patrick's Day. So it was a pretty fun activity and I'm, I really hope they enjoyed that. And then as for April, we are planning to dedicate this month to Autism Awareness Month. As of now, the events, like, like what we're planning, like how we're, the event we're having is not like fully like figured out yet, but we hope the further out, like have something that can, that the youth can enjoy as well as learn more for as of when it comes to autism and how it affects everyone, how it affects others.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions? Any questions for Yak members? No? We had a long study session last time, so I think we had a lot of questions. All right, well, thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pass the consent calendar. C1, consider approval of a 2024 F450 maintenance truck. C2, consider approval of the purchase of one 2024 Ford Transit for the Department of Public Works. C3, consider award of a bid and purchase order to Motor City Electric for installation of a new supervisory control and data acquisition system, SCADA. C4, consider approval of a purchase order to KJP Roofing and Sheet Metal for removal and replacement of fire three, fire station three roof. C5, consider approval of Heritage Park electrical sub panel installation. C6, consider request to increase blanket purchase order for PSD IT system technical support. And C7, consider approving an increase to the blanket purchase order issued to Kent Communication Incorporated.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Borninski.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have a resolution to add also. So can I have somebody read the resolution, declaring April 22nd, 2024 Earth Day?
I will. Resolution of Board of Trustees Charter Township of Canton, Michigan. Resolution declaring April 22nd, 2024 Earth Day in Canton Township. Whereas Earth Day is commemorated annually on April 22nd to demonstrate support for environmental protection, advance sustainability initiatives, and raise awareness about the challenges facing our planet. Whereas the theme for Earth Day 2024 is Planet vs. Plastics, highlighting the urgent need to address the global crisis caused by the production, proliferation, and pollution of plastics, the impact of which can be felt in every corner of the planet. Whereas plastics have become a pervasive and harmful presence in our ecosystems, endangering wildlife and humans alike, contaminating water sources, and contributing to the degradation of our natural resources. Whereas a global public health crisis has emerged due to plastics contaminating our water, air, land, and food, resulting in hormone disruptions, reproductive issues, and other health complications, which cost the United States an estimated $250 billion annually in healthcare costs. And whereas it is imperative that we take collective action to reduce plastic consumption, promote sustainable alternatives, and advocate for policies that mitigate the distribution of single-use plastics and plastic waste. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day in Canton Township, and urges all residents, businesses, and institutions to join in efforts to combat plastic pollution, promote environmental sustainability, and work towards a healthier, more resilient planet.
Support?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Anyone want to comment on it, or? As you can see, we're using glass again.
Yeah, and we are going to plant trees on May 5th during our fishing derby, May 4th, I think, yeah. We are doing that, so, yeah. And we are working, we already have an item on our agenda for planting more trees.
Very good. Headed in the right direction. All right, the next item on the agenda is G0, consider accepting a grant from the State Disaster Contingency Fund.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the attached resolution adopting the State Disaster Contingency Fund Grant Resolution.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. The Charter Township of Canton sustained severe losses brought on by severe storms, tornado, and flooding occurring August 24th through 26th, 2023. Uninsured losses incurred include that of tree damage removal and replacement, debris removal, flood damage to a police vehicle, employee overtime, and miscellaneous expenses. Pursuant to Section 19 of the Emergency Management Act, Act 90, Public Acts of 1976, as amended, Canton Township will be awarded grant funding to recoup some or all of the uninsured expenses incurred up to $1 million. Director Stockline, do you have anything to add?
I'll just add that we know that we're not going to receive a million dollars, but the state said we need to put that in there in case it goes up to that, that amount, so we're probably expecting somewhere in the range of about $200,000 would be my guess. So a good, a good amount of money coming back from the state on this grant, so. But that's why you see the million dollars in there.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider approval of an agreement and purchase order to.
G1.
I'm sorry, G1, that was G0. Consider resolution to approve water and sewer rates for the 2024 fiscal year pursuant to Part 1, Chapter 74, entitled Utilities, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 2, entitled Schedule of Rates and Charges.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a resolution as follows. Whereas Chapter 74, Division 2, Subdivision 274-83, Schedule of Rates and Charges of the Code of Ordinance for the Canton Township provides that Township Board shall annually adopt the rate, fees, or charges charged for services provided by the resolution to ensure the sound financial operation of the water or sewer system. And whereas the Director of Finance and the Director of Municipal Service Division have reviewed the operational condition of the township's water and sewer system and have recommended adoption of the rate set forth in the attached documents. Now therefore be it resolved that all the recommended rate, fees, and charges for services shall be provided and implemented, sorry, as of May, May 1st, 2024.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. Each year staff prepares a comprehensive analysis of proposed rates and charges for water and sewer services based on the true cost of service. Board has adopted those recommendations and is now necessary to adopt a resolution to reflect the changes being proposed. In order to satisfy the revenue requirements for the 2024 fiscal year, the attached rate changes are recommended for adoption by the Board of Trustees. It is important to note that the proposed increases represent approximately half the current inflation rate. Additionally, the current use of cash balance will smooth out future impacts on rates. The new rates would take on all customers' bills starting May 1st, 2024, and represent an average bimonthly increase of less than 0.02% to the user. Director Norwood and Director Trumble, do you want to say anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I have a few slides, if we could share them, if you want to see some of the, what it looks like.
Okay. You should be able to share from my end.
Coming up here.
There you go.
Okay. So is, is this time of year, we do do the review of the rates as, as stated in the RBA.
Dave, can you make that? There you go, thank you.
Little history, you know, this is the status of our system, so our assets and all the things that we're required to maintain, keep in great working order, which we do. These are the things that are going to happen this year. You'll be seeing the five-year master plan. That's, we're due to submit that to the board this year, and we'll review some of those things and what, what, what it looks like on the horizon for us, our more investments you have to do in the system. And tonight, you, on a consent calendar, you approved this SCADA system. That's the communication between DPW and the water storage system that has been saving the township significant amount of dollars on our, our water rates. So we have to, we had to update, our current, our current provider of that is not, not keeping up to speed, so we, we have a new one coming online now. Here's the, you've probably seen this chart over the years. I know in the past Jade has presented these things, so I'm keeping it going here as far as this is our consumption. Relatively stable. Little bit of change in trends. Here's our, all the different expenses that the dollars go to. See that it's mostly, water purchases is our largest expense. How it breaks down. And I'm going to throw it to Wendy, Director Trumble.
Good evening. So if you can go back to the last slide real quick, Dave, one thing to note on here is the total expenses for 20, I think it's probably the 2024 expenses, not the 23.
My bad.
But the total expenses are about $37 million. The water makes up 21 million of those of the budget, and the sewer is about 15 million, so that's about a 60/40 split. So that's something that's kind of an important factor to note when you look at the difference of the variable rates for the water and sewer, why they're split about 60/40, so you'll see that in a minute. But if you could go to the next slide. When we calculate the rates, we really start with the 2024 budget that the board has adopted, and with that rate, we adjust for known differences. So we know that there are certain items that we are required to budget for, like depreciation expense, that is actually not a cash expense. So it's just a bookkeeping item only. So we reduce what cash we need from the overall budgeted expenses by, by items that we know we don't need cash for. However, there's also some items that are not in the expense budget, because of the way accounting rules work, like the principal payment on debt. So we are still paying off some sewer debt of about $1.9 million a year, so then we have to add that to the 2024 budget to account for that, because when we're collecting the revenue from our residents and the users of the system, we still have to pay those bond payments off. So we need to make sure we're collecting enough cash to pay our bills. But then there's, there's also situations where we're kind of conservative, conservative when we budget. So we sit down, finance is down with municipal services, and we talk to them about where we think we might have some excess room in the budget. We don't reduce the budget, but we just reduce what we think we need to collect cash for, so we're not overcharging residents for items we don't think we're actually going to need. So that's kind of, that's kind of where we get our baseline of how we establish the rates. And then we also look at where our cash balances are at the end of the year, and look at those compared to where the target cash balances are. So we know that as our system ages, we should be keeping a certain amount of cash on hand for emergency situations. The older the system gets, the more you should keep on hand, is kind of the general target, and we're getting to be about middle-aged. So at one point in time, for example, one of those, one of those guidelines is you should always keep about 1% to 3% of the historical investment in your capital assets. A new system is 1%, an old system is 3%. So we're, I think we established we're about 2, we're in the mid-range now. Like we should keep 2% of cash on hand for, 2% of the historical investment assets is cash on hand. So we look at those, and then we actually looked at, from where our available cash is, we were about 20, $28 million, but our target cash is about $24 million. We actually decided to use about $2.5 million of our available cash to help offset the rates to minimize any increase to the residents this year. And then, once we actually determine what our total cash needs are, it's a pretty simple calculation. You just take those cash needs, you divide it by how much our projected consumption is, and Dave just kind of showed where our historical consumption has been. We look at the average over the last 10 years, and that comes up with our rates. So if you want to show this, this, this next slide shows the impact of the proposed rate change to three different users. We have the low users, people who don't have sprinkler systems, probably don't have a lot of people in the house. They're pretty low users, so their bimonthly usage, they use about 2 million, it's 2, says 2,000 up there, but it's, I think, 2,000,000. So 2 million gallons of water every, every two months. The average user in the middle is about 8,000 or 8 million, and the high user is 18 million gallons. So the old rate, you can see what they would have paid last year on an annual basis, it was just the second blue line with the numbers on there. Using the old rate, they would have paid, the low user would have paid $211.44, and now they're going to pay $211.68. So you're talking about a four cent every two-month difference for them. The average user is going to pay about 16 cents difference every month, so less than a dollar, about a dollar for a year. And then the high user is going to pay about $3 more over the course of a year. So we, that we, we're also able to hold the fixed fee flat. So if you notice that, the fixed fee for both of those, for all three of those scenarios is going to be $14 every two months for, for those users. And I actually don't know if we have a slide for the breakdown of the rates. We did not, but the variable rate is going to go from $10.62 total for both water and sewer to $10.64. And 60% of that does represent the water portion, as it kind of flows from the budget that you saw, that's the percentage of the budget. And 40% of that approximately is the sewer. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Wendy, thank you for the email where you, you know, gave us a little more info on this. And I just wanted to note that GLWA, who we get our water from, has increased their rates to the township by 6.6% starting July 1st. And so, you know, when they raise rates, that makes it difficult for us to keep rates down.
Right, and our, our system is aging, and Dave can speak to that. You know, we had a pretty significant loss this year, water loss this year, a pretty significant break in the north.
Yeah, at Sheldon Warren, you probably noticed that the road has got a diagonal coal path through it that was due to a leak that went undetected for a while, because it was actually draining into that drain there that runs from the north, northwest corner to the southeast corner. And we determined it won, once DT had a gas paint break there, so that, that triggered us to be out there, because they were out there and saw the leak. So that'll be repaired this summer, but that was a significant water loss for us.
So when we have those situations, we're still buying all that water from Great Lakes, but it's not charged to our residents, but we still have to pay for that. So as our system ages, it's, you know, it's important that we have enough cash on hand to maintain and to be able to repair these breaks in the system when, when they come up without impacting the users significantly. So we were able to maintain even with a significant, you know, water break, not really needing to pass that on to the residents, so that's, that's really a good story.
Right, so the, the planned use of the money that we had, you know, the fund balance there, I think is really helpful to the residents to keep the rates, you know, lower than they would have been because of the 6.6% increase by GLWA.
Correct. And also what helped is that last year in 2023 was our last year of our principal payment, of our bond payment on the water storage facility. So that did decrease our need for cash by about $1.5 million for 2024, so that did help as well.
Yeah, I just, every year we see that how, you know, municipal services and Wendy, you work on getting how we can get the best rates for our customers. And like as Kate said, it's not really dependent on how we say, it's basically, it's based on GLWA rates. So I think we are trying our best to keep the costs low at, the hike very, very low, based on what we are getting from our vendors.
Yeah, I, I think every year that I've been here, we've always said, oh, this is an unusual year, we're, we're probably going to have to raise rates pretty soon. And I think every year we've had so many fortunate things happening in our residents' favor, between, you know, the building the water storage facility that really assisted getting out of the county and, you know, sending all of our sewage flow through Watuwa. That helped save the township residents a lot of dollars, but I know, you know, all the municipal services directors that have been here since I've been here were always, you know, like, oh, there's going to be a year, there's going to, that year is going to come, but fortunately, it's not this year. So we don't think it's coming in the next year or two, but yeah, we're, we're very fortunate to be in the situation that we are.
Yeah, I just want to say kudos, you guys always do such a great job. I appreciate it. And I know, you know, we have to be careful, we have to have that cushion for the water main breaks and the water loss to make sure that we're paying for it. But I know, you know, this coming year will be great. I hear from our residents all the time, so this year I can tell them, you know, it's two cents per every thousand gallons, and, and, you know, how fortunate we are this time around. But you're right, we need to monitor and make sure that we're bringing in the revenue so we can maintain, especially as our infrastructure gets older. So, thank you.
Evaluate the rates every year too, which is good. Okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item G2, consider approval of agreement with Hazel Coffee.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an agreement and purchase order with Hazel Coffee LLC for a total of $9,500 to provide a work-study program utilizing out-of-school.
to provide a work-study program utilizing out-of-school time grant funding.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. Canton Leisure Services is currently in the process of partnering with Hazel Coffee to create a work-study program for special needs youth and young adults, people of color, minorities, and low socioeconomic status youth. Funded through the Out of School Time Grant awarded to the Block Youth and Teen Center, this program will provide invaluable job training in math, customer service, business, and literacy. Overall, this experience would provide participants with higher self-esteem, independence, responsibility, and community connectedness, each of which helps participants to sustain and accelerate learning in critical educational avenues. Canton Leisure Services is requesting approval of a contract with Hazel Coffee LLC to provide a work-study program for a fee of $9,500 to be paid with out-of-school time grant funds. Director LaPever, do you want to add anything to that?
Just that we're really excited for this program. This is a great partnership. I know we talked about it last week briefly during our study session, but we're really looking forward to partnering with Hazel to help some of our youth and some of our therapeutic rec participants gain some valuable job experience and some independence. So it should be a great program. I just wanted to address the Youth Advisory Council's question while I have a second. As far as the funding goes, fortunately, a lot of the funding is upfront cost and buying some materials and equipment. So hopefully, that will help us continue the program in the future without any additional expenses there. We do intend to keep applying for out-of-school time grants. We understand that once you're accepted, that they do make funds available for continuing programs. So we fully intend to keep asking for more money every year. This is also a pilot program. So as we develop it and see the results and the success of it that we think we're going to have, we'll continue to explore other funding sources as well. And we do receive funds from Wayne County for our therapeutic program. So we're very confident we'll be able to keep this program beyond this year's grant.
Okay. Questions?
I just had a comment. John, you have quite a few items on the agenda, but I think this is the one we like the most, at least I like the most because we are using this opportunity to give, you know, youth with special needs and people that need a much-needed job training. So I'm very excited to see how this goes.
Yeah, we liked it as first, too. And a lot of our staff would tell you how excited. They're most excited for this program above anything. So yeah, we're ready to roll.
Okay, Kate?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Trustee Ganguly. This is my favorite item on the agenda tonight. And we've been waiting a little while for it. So excited that it's finally here and we can hopefully prove it tonight.
Yeah, once we get them up and running here, which is going to happen this month in April, we'll let you know. You'll have to stop by and get a cup of coffee.
Definitely.
Hot chocolate, too.
Hot chocolate, tea, whatever your preference is.
And where is it going to be at?
They're going to start, Hazel's going to be operating their mobile unit again this year. They're going to start out where they are each Sunday for the farmer's market. They'll be at Preservation Park on Ridge Road during the week as well.
Very good. Great, thank you. Good program. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3. Consider approval of a purchase order for sound and lighting support services for the 2024 Liberty Fest.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize a purchase order in the amount of $13,500 to ignited light and sound for the lighting and sound services at the 2024 Liberty Fest.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. In March of 2024, a request for proposal was solicited for sound and lighting support services for Canton's Liberty Festival. Two proposals are received from Great Lakes Sound Incorporated in the amount of $21,900 and ignited light and sound in the amount of $13,500. The proposal includes audio and lighting services for three days on two separate stages, the amphitheater and Mobile Canton Live Stage. Leisure Services is recommending the approval of a purchase order for the sound and lighting support services for the 2024 Liberty Festival to ignited light and sound. Director LaPever, do you want to add anything to this?
Nothing to add, but I could talk about Liberty Fest all night if you want. But I'm happy to take any questions.
It's an exciting time. For the kids, it means that school is over for the... Any other questions? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4. Consider award of agreement and approval of a purchase order for rental of tents, tables, and chairs for the Liberty Fest.
Madam Supervisor, I move toward a five-year agreement with annual opt-out clause for the rental of the Liberty Fest tent, tables, and chairs from Deluxe Tents and Events. And I further move to authorize a 2024 purchase order to Deluxe Tents and Events in the amount of $21,000.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. In February 2024, bids were solicited for the rental of tents, tables, and chairs for the Liberty Festival. The bid includes options for auto renewals for up to five years with an opt-out clause by Canton Township post-event for each year of the agreement. Four companies submitted bids with Deluxe Tents and Events being the lowest bidder. Deluxe Tents and Events have supplied tents, tables, and chairs for Liberty Festival for the past two years and have been a dependable vendor and service provider. Leisure Services is recommending awarding a five-year agreement to Deluxe Tents and Events for the tent, table, and chair rental for Liberty Fest. Additionally, we are requesting approval of a purchase order in amount not to exceed $21,000 for Deluxe Tents and Events for each year of the agreement. Director LaPever, do you want to add anything?
Just that it's difficult to find companies that can provide the full order for us. Deluxe has done that the last couple of years to a really high level. So as we go through this, it just made sense for us to kind of put together a multi-year agreement. We've had this in the past. Kind of missed a couple of years with COVID there. But so we've kind of picked up where we left off. Deluxe does a great job. We've included a little bit of buffer there for incidentals or added tents or things to give us some flexibility as we plan the festival. But this is kind of an not-to-exceed amount. We rarely ever come anywhere close to that total. But yeah, Deluxe has been great, and it allows us to make the park look as beautiful as it does for the festival and create that uniformity and provide a lot of safe coverage and shade for our festival goers.
Thank you. Questions or comments for the board? Your hand, okay.
Yeah, this is for five years. So are they giving us the same price all five years?
They are, they do. And that's one of the things that's been great about them. Their fee has not increased despite everybody else's, who's does. So it's a five-year agreement. However, it's essentially five one-year agreements for Canton. So if at any point, you know, we no longer want to utilize Deluxe, we can cancel that.
Right. I noted the opt-out, which...
Yeah, so it's really beneficial for us.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
There's? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5. Yes. Consider approval of a contract change for OHM Advisors for engineering and planning services for the initial phase of Cherry Hill Village. We watched the proposal last week, actually.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a contract change and purchase order increase to OHM Advisors for the additional professional engineering services for the initial phase of Cherry Hill Village Square Development.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. On August 22, 2023, the Board of Trustees approved RBA item G10 for OHM Advisors to provide engineering services for the initial phase of Cherry Hill Village. As a result of this PO as listed, it was approved for a total of $117,500. During the initial process, additional unexpected permitting and regulatory requirements were required. OHM's revised proposal includes conceptual changes, additional water feature scope items, additional south parking lot scope items, lighting standards, and property acquisition assistance. Due to these additional services, Canton Community Development is requesting a contract change with OHM to include these items along with a purchase order increase of $55,000 to PO as listed for a total PO amount of $172,500. Approval of the contract change will be pending based on legal review. Director LaPever, do you want to add anything?
Nothing to add. I know OHM did a nice job of laying out all the additions in their letters, but I'm happy to answer any questions about those.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6. Consider approval of a budget amendment and contract agreement to OHM Advisors for the engineering services and bid document assistance for Cherry Hill Village Town Square Phase 1.
Madam Supervisor, I approve the budget amendment stated in the Budget Implications and Account Number section of the RBA. And I further move approve waiving the bidding process and award the engineering services and bid document assistance for Cherry Hill Village Town Square Phase 1 in the amount not to exceed $248,000 to OHM Advisors pending legal review.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. Through a combination of funding sources, Canton continues to design and develop the Canton Town Square project at Cherry Hill Village. Town Square project design focuses on activating the space surrounding the Cherry Hill School. OHM Advisors have provided planning services to help develop the associated concepts to date and are now working toward the next steps of the project to include the engineering services and bid document assistance for the Cherry Hill Village Town Square Phase 1. A budget amendment will be necessary to recognize the anticipated revenue and expenses from Wayne County ARPA, which includes construction of the factory, town square, and preservation park, as well as public parking. Community Development is requesting approval to set the 2024 Cherry Hill Village budget in the amount of $7,828,276 to cover the costs of these upcoming anticipated expenses in 2024. Additionally, OHM has played a key instrumental role in developing the Cherry Hill Village Square project concept. To continue this significant momentum, staff are requesting the bidding process be waived and to approve an agreement with OHM Advisors for the additional engineering services and bid document assistance for Phase 1 of this project in an amount not to exceed $248,000. The board of the contract will be pending based on legal review. Director LaPever, anything else?
This is the last stretch of our design and planning services. It's been a long road, but we are nearing the bid process and hopefully eventual construction here this year and next. So OHM has been good. They've brought us to this point, and we're looking forward to the next steps of moving some dirt and getting some things happening in the village.
Thanks. Questions or comments?
Exciting.
Yep. All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7. Request budget amendments to the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the attached budget amendment required for the 2020 to 2022 CIP bond projects.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. In 2019, the Township Board approved a five-year capital improvement plan for just under $30 million in capital projects to be completed throughout 2019 through 2023. After putting all CIP projects on hold for a large portion of '20 and '21, we are continuing to catch up on backlog projects. As a result, various budget amendments are needed to move budgets quickly, originally planned for 2020 through 2022 into 2024. The amount of the request equals the amount in the board-approved CIP plan. If the bids come in higher than the amounts included in the original 219-approved plan, a request will be made at that time to increase the budget. Director Trumbull, do you want to add anything?
Sure. This is just simply a housekeeping item to move the budget from '23 for projects that haven't been started yet into '24. We couldn't do that at adoption of the budget timer. We would have been in violation of the State's Budget Act. It would have looked like we were budgeting a deficit, and that wasn't the case. So this isn't approving any specific projects. Any of the projects will still come before the board for approval. It's just a matter of getting all of the budget dollars in the fund. So it cleans it up. So when the different departments bring those capital items forward, the budget's already been in there. So we're not asking to increase the budget at this point in time. It's just strictly a housekeeping item to get a budget established for those CIP items that have not yet been started. Director Norwood, you know, his team has been working with finance, trying to figure out which projects still need to go from there. We do have some projects that they've been able to eliminate from the plan, and they're still trying to look at it a little bit more. So we're not 100% sure. We're going to need all of even the money that we're rolling over at this point in time, but we wanted to get it there established in case we did. Director Norwood or myself would be happy to answer any questions on that.
Any?
So my question, Wendy, was are these the increased amounts? Like, you know, at the beginning, it said that we, you know, because of the cost of the project increasing, these project amounts are increased. Like, you know, so my question to you was the list of projects that were there. So these are, are these all, like, you know, the budgets that the CIP projects that we had planned, are these the increased amounts, the list that? No, it's just, it's just there.
It's just as...
Because we are moving with these, these projects had delayed, and we are moving with these projects for this year, right?
Correct, correct.
That's all I needed to...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All those in favor, the motion say aye? Or do you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify that these are projects that we had originally planned for earlier, 2020, 2022 timeframe.
Correct, through '23, correct.
Okay. And due to COVID, we weren't able to do them.
Yeah, correct. We weren't able to start. The plan was really from 2019 to 2023. And then the 2019, a lot of those got delayed because we weren't really prepared for those, and then COVID hit. So we've really been working hard. We, i.e., facilities, has been working very hard to try to get these projects completed as quickly as possible and trying to find alternatives, ways to get these projects completed under budget because everything has come in higher. And I think they've done a great job saving money in a few different areas, and some things have come in higher. And then really pushing some projects off that we really thought we could Band-Aid together a little bit longer that wasn't necessary for significant improvement at this point in time. But, correct, these are all from projects really pushed off due to COVID. And then some of them pushed off because of the cost and trying to find some alternative scenarios that might accomplish what we need it to at a reduced cost. Thank you. You're welcome.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Director LaPever, for G6, did you answer that? One question's on safety.
I didn't, and I realized afterwards, so I apologize. So that was from the Youth Advisory Council in regards to the Cherry Hill Village project. And the question, just as a refresher, was how is safety being factored into the development, such as lighting and emergency call buttons? So we actually have done one of the additional items in the original contract from item five was related to a lighting study that was done with the new parking area. So through the Planning Division, we've actually conducted a lighting assessment of Cherry Hill Village. A lot of the structures, the light poles that were put in there originally, the technology, as we all know, from lighting has enhanced tremendously. So the lighting's not great in Cherry Hill Village, and it's one of the things we're going to be addressing through this project is increasing the lighting, not just in the parking area that we're developing, but throughout the village itself. So great question. Definitely something we're working on. And then as we kind of advance some of the development, we will certainly look, as the space gets utilized and how people are using it, making sure that there are some safety features in there, you know, ways to call for assistance and help, things like that. So great question. Yes, absolutely, part of the planning process with the lighting being addressed on the front end. So thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, I think the other question was too about emergency buttons or call.
Right, yeah.
So that's going to be in the light poles also, you're saying?
We'll do the light poles, and then as the space, you know, as the square gets built out, we start to utilize the space, we'll certainly make sure that we have opportunities for people to get help. Part of the Cherry Hill Village Square plan has a permanent restroom built into it. So, I mean, there's going to be facilities out there. There's going to be some security things we want to put in place so that will come with that part of the project.
Okay, thanks. Good question. Item G8. Consider approval for a purchase order for reconstruction of the Heritage Park Shade Sale Structure, Labor, and Equipment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment stated in the Budget Implication and Account Number section of the RBA. And I further move to approve purchase order of KAB Enterprise KAB Enterprise for the reconstruction of the third shade sale structure at the Heritage Park splash pad.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Ganguly. As a result of the tornado that occurred in August 2023, the newly installed shade sale structures of the Heritage Park Splash Pad were severely damaged, comprising, compromising the structure and deemed unsafe. MSD and CLS staff worked together on contacting KAB to repair and replace any items that were compromised or damaged during the storm. KAB was able to work with shade systems to provide replacement material for the three structures at no cost. KAB has provided a quote that includes labor and equipment for the removal and installation of the three structures for a total cost of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars and eighty cents. This cost has been approved and will be reimbursed by the Canton's insurance provider. I don't see, I think Director Homberger's, I don't know, John Zelina's is on, though I know he's been working on it. John, do you want to make any comments? I can't allow you to talk, don't I?
Hey, good afternoon. No, uh, no comments. I know that KAB is working, um, to get the shade sales themselves, uh, under warranty at no cost to us. I believe that was in there as well. So, that was, um, a nice add on their part. Uh, we look forward to getting it done as, as soon as possible. I know KAB is ready to, to hit the ground running as well. They're very familiar with it, um, since they installed the original structures. Um, so we're excited to have that going again.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Comments? Can't wait till that's done. We just opened it, and then it was destroyed. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for Heritage Park pavement and electrical. Wayne County has agreed to allocate, oh, I'm, I'll wait for motion, I'm sorry.
I'm, Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment stated, right one? We're on G.
G nine.
Yeah. Let me double. Okay. Uh, Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment stated in the Budget Implication and Account section of the RBA, and I further move to authorize the supervisor to sign the intergovernmental agreement between, between Wayne County and Canton Township for the Heritage Park path repaving and underground electrical.
Support. Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Ganguly. Wayne County has agreed to allocate a second year of funding for the Heritage Park path repaving and underground electrical through the Wayne County Parks Village for a combined total amount of three hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars for fiscal years 2022 through 23 and 23 through 24 fiscal year. An intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton has been drafted for approval by both governing authorities. A budget amendment is necessary. Uh, Director Homberger is not here. I don't know, Deputy Supervisor, if you want to speak to it at all, or, or Director Lefebvre, whichever.
I could probably help as needed.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
I just, I just wanted to note that this, um, is going to be paid out of Wayne County Parks Village.
Yes, that's where it comes from. It comes, we get some, we get an amount, amount each year.
Yep.
We're going to approve the paths and the electrical around Heritage Park. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G ten, consider approval of purchase order for Cremboli Nursery for park tree planting services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize a purchase order in the amount of forty thousand, forty-four dollars to Cremboli Nursery to reestablish the tree canopy in the Heritage Park and Griffith Park.
Support.
Motion by, by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. In January 24, Canton was awarded a twenty thousand dollar matching grant from the U.S. Forest Service to reestablish tree canopy in Heritage Park and Griffith Park. In partnership with Planning Services, Leisure Services has prepared a tree planting plan to be implemented in the spring of '24. On March 12th, '24, Canton awarded a tree planting agreement to Cremboli Nursery. The tree planting agreement included all community street and park trees. Based on this agreement and the ability to perform the work in April '24, Leisure Services is requesting approval for a purchase order in the amount of forty thousand, forty-four dollars. Uh, Director Homberger isn't here, but, um, I'm sure the staff can answer if anyone has any questions. This is good, we're seeing trees being replanted from the storm. Okay. Yes, there was a question about the lifespan of the trees. So, we do have, Director Norwood, I don't know if you want to talk about that. We do have that tree expert on our staff now.
Yes, we do. So, we have been working with CLS on this with, through the Planning Division of MSD about, uh, the planning that's going to happen there. So, based upon the species, they have a certain lifespan. Uh, we are not planting Bradford pears anymore.
Right.
I can tell you that.
Right. We just took back down a lot of the Bradford pears because they, their life was expired.
Failing, yeah, they're failing.
Yeah.
I, I note that there's, um, quite a variety of species and, um, definitely some hardwoods there, so.
Well, some are native, some are not, but they're hardy, can handle our environment.
Fortunately, if a tornado comes along, it shortens the span, yes. No more tornadoes. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eleven, consider approving an amendment to the Partners in Architecture Agreement to include geotechnical analysis along with an amendment to the 24 fire budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the amendment to the Partners in Architecture Agreement to include geotechnical analysis, and I further move to approve the above-listed amendment to the 2024 fire budget to increase purchase order 2023 dash zero 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 two nine six five.
Support. Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Ganguly. The Canton Fire Department is requesting to amend the original agreement with Partners in Architecture to include geotechnical analysis. The additional cost associated with the service is twelve thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars. The department is requesting an amendment to the 24 fire budget to increase the original purchase order with PIA to cover these costs. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
Uh, this is basically just the, uh, drilling to find out if the foundation will be stable or we're putting the station.
We're getting close, designing the fire station. Questions or comments? Kate?
So, this is for fire station number four.
Four, yes.
Yes. Um, we got a grant for this, right? Or is it paying for this part of it, or just for the geothermal when we get it?
So, we received seven million from the state and then another almost 1.8 million from the feds, so this definitely cover this. Um, it really depends on, um, how much the geothermal and the other alternative energies, um, systems come back at, which, uh, I'll just add that we had, um, some good results back, and we'll be having a meeting this week, later this week on Friday, um, that that site is suitable for geothermal as well.
So, that's exciting. And right next door is the, um, the food pantry there, and they're very excited because we're going to be giving them some parking spaces, too. If you ever go there on Thursday, you can see they're parked on the side of the road, and it's muddy, and now they're going to have some extra space we'll share with them. Thank you. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G twelve, consider renewing the license plate reader annual subscription.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the renewal of Vigilant Solutions license plate reader annual subscription through Vigilant Solution in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars.
Have a support? Okay. Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. In 2018, uh, the Police Department is requesting to renew its annual subscription for its license plate reader system through Vigilant Solutions LLC in the amount of thirteen thousand, one fifty-five, and this is one that we have usually in one vehicle, one of the vehicles. Director Bow, do you want to add anything?
Just to provide context, it allows us to use a database that's used throughout the state of Michigan and beyond to solve violent crime and property crime. Um, for instance, one case in this township can cost upwards of seventy-five thousand dollars, and the more information we have, um, we can not only create more efficiencies, but allow us to solve the problem.
Director Bow, before you came in, one of the, uh, Yak students asked if we have looked at alternative options for this.
Yeah, there are alternative options. They're all priced the same, and this database gives us access to the most amount of data.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G thirteen, consider waiving the bidding process to purchase 12 Taser X two six P units and accessories from sole source Exxon Enterprise Incorporated.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase or, purchase of 12 Taser X two six P units and accessory from the sole source vendor, Exxon Enterprise in the amount of twenty-five thousand, twelve dollars and fifty-two cents, utilizing the funds in the 2024 police budget.
Support. Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Ganguly. The Police Department is requesting to purchase 12 Taser X two six P units, accessories, and warranties from Exxon Enterprise Incorporated in the amount of twenty-five thousand, twelve dollars and fifty-two cents. Exxon Enterprise Incorporated is proprietary and is the sole source vendor of their product. Taser brand is industry standard, a feasible alternative option does not exist on the market to date. Director Bow, do you want to add anything?
This purchase here allows us to maintain the standards, the current ones that these were replaced are going out of service, so allows us to have that tool, um, for de-escalation reasons and to use, um, a level of force that does not harm.
Board, want any questions, comments? Okay. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G fourteen, consider approval of reappointment to the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Advisory Council.
Madam Supervisor, I move to reappoint Colleen Conklin to the CDBG Advisory Council for a three-year term to expire on April 9th, 2027.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Ganguly. Under the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Advisory Council bylaws, the confirmation of all Advisory Council members must be approved by a majority of the Board of Trustees. Colleen Conklin's term is expired, and she submitted an application for reappointment. Colleen has provided great service during her first full term with CDBG, and the Board of Trustees Interview Committee recommends a second term for Ms. Conklin. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything? This is basically a reappointment. I'm just seeing if Colleen's on. She is not on. Okay. Any questions from the board? Kate?
Just, um, a comment. I just wanted to thank Ms. Conklin for her service and, um, for her willingness to serve again.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Conklin. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Is there any public comment in the room for three minutes? This is three minutes where you can give your comments to the board. Anyone in the room? Okay, I will go online. If you want to make public comment, you have three minutes. You can raise your hand electronically. We have one person to make public comment right now. Hang on just a second. Let me. Let me pop the timer. There we go. Okay, uh, please state your name, and, um, I think it's Mr. McCausland. You can go ahead for three minutes. Mr. McCausland, you can go ahead. Can you hear me? You have to unmute. You are unmute. I'll ask you to unmute again. I'm asking you, Mr. McCausland, to, there you go. Okay, go ahead. Yep, still, I, I see you're muting and unmuting. Asking you to unmute again. Okay, I'm sure he was not muted. Want to go ahead and talk? Okay, we will, um, we'll come back to you. I see also Bob McCausland. I'm going to allow you to speak electronically. Okay, Mr. McCausland.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, um, just a comment. I noticed that on a lot of bid items, I mean, on a lot of proposals, we don't have the mandatory bid. I was wondering, does that change in, uh, policy, or are we doing that for convenience? Are we doing that for, we dealt with the vendor before, is it best to breed? What does we, you know, get an answer on that? And if you can't answer me now, I'd like it in writing.
Okay, do you know which item?
Uh, it just seems like all, all items here that, uh, except for the Taser item, which wasn't available through another vendor because they're the exclusive on it. It just seems like all these proposals are coming to the board, and we don't have competition. And in government, a lot of times when you don't have competition, it leads to not really the best outcome. So, I just, I was just curious on why we don't have mandatory three bids. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let me go back to Dan McCausland. Dan McCausland, do you want to try speaking? Are you both maybe at the same location? You can share the phone. Um, Dan McCausland, you are unmuted from my end. Okay. All right, maybe next time where you can write your, put your question in writing. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Nope, online? Nope. Okay, great. Public comments closed. Um, how about staff comment? Any events happening this weekend?
Yeah, we do have, uh, a behind-the-wheel event, uh, with our therapeutic recreation participants. It has been moved to the summit, uh, due to the impending rain. We'll still be driving in the parking lot, of course, of the summit, but the event will be taking place over there, which will allow us to be in close proximity to our neighborhood, Neighborhood Know-How meeting as well. Um, and then on Sunday is our indoor farmer's market at the summit on the park. So, we are getting closer to our outdoor farmer's market, but in case anybody's itching, uh, this Sunday is a good opportunity to come visit.
All right, thank you. Director Bow, anything?
The police will be participating with the Neighborhood Know-How, which is important with some of the ordinance issues.
Yeah, Neighborhood Know-How is this Thursday. Correct. Director Trumbull? Do you want to, do you want to speak to, since you're the Finance Director, about why, how they choose to use, um, certain vendors that we've been using and how they determine what to do with the policy?
Yeah, so, the board has the opportunity to waive the purchasing policy because it's really a board-approved policy unless there's federal guidelines, uh, unless it's a federal grant. The federal grant really would dictate if things had to be procured a specific way, but, um, not knowing for sure which item, um, Mr. McCausland is referring to, for the most part, um, we may choose to not put a professional service out to bid, maybe because somebody's already been, we've already bid this out, and they've already been significantly involved in a project. And to start from square one with a new, um, professional services vendor, like an engineering services firm, that is actually going to cost us more to start from square one with somebody else, and we want to continue with them. Uh, in other cases, um, there, you know, we've got a lot of experience. Sometimes we bid things out for a three-year term to be used for multiple different, um, projects, like Cremboli, I believe we have a three-year agreement with them already, or we bid them out earlier for another project, and they agreed to hold their prices. So, uh, we do try to address that in every individual RBA if, if we are not getting three bids for some reason, and here's the reason why. Uh, but if there's a specific item that, um, we have, they have questions on it, I'm happy to look into it to find out, um, you know, why that's the case, and if it's not stated on our, you know, the individual RBAs, we can make sure, all the directors can make sure to state on their RBAs, you know, if they're not bidding it out, why they're not. And that, that's something we can definitely do to make sure the public is comfortable with our process.
Like you said, a lot of times it costs more money if you're in the middle of a project.
Right.
All right, thank you. Director Stockline, anything?
Uh, we have the movie night this Friday over at the fire station, so we have a bunch of kids over there, so it's always a good time.
What's the movie?
Um, that's a great question.
Oh, no.
What is it?
Elemental.
Elemental.
I've never seen it, so that's why I didn't remember it. But, uh, so we've got that Friday night, and then also, we've been, um, you know, installing these free smoke detectors through our program, and on the 20th, we're going to be doing a blitz down at Academy Point, so we're going to try and get into every, every home down there and get a smoke detector installed, or, or several smoke detectors installed. installed, or several smoke detectors installed. So, in the state right now, we're third in the state for installing smoke detectors, and this is a free program to our residents. So, if you haven't signed up, we're almost a year out right now for appointments, but we're still taking them and making sure that we can get them on the list, so.
People don't have to worry about their house being cleaned, just cleared so we can put the smoke detectors on.
And when we're in there, we're going to give a few pointers as well, so it's a good educational moment.
Very good. Thank you. Director Norwood?
The only thing I'd like to mention, Madam Supervisor, you maybe mentioned too, next, next week, on the 17th, is the meeting MDOT is hosting at the summit to give us an update on Ford Road, the Boulevard project from 4:00 till 6:00. And I know that later after that meeting is another event for the township, too, that I think my colleague at the end of the table didn't mention, but the reopening of the
Baseball.
Softball.
Light up the park.
Good night.
Light up the park. I was deferring to you, I was letting you talk about neighborhood know-how, so I was deferring to that.
Yeah, and also, yeah, neighborhood know-how this week will be talking about how, what are the things you should get a permit for? What are important to get a permit? What's that process? And how we can make it easy on residents to go through that, getting how, why it's important to have a permit, too. We will also be doing some, some information about the new waste hauling, but we'll be having more information about that as the summer goes along.
And then Light Up the Park is out at the Canton Sports Center. We're very excited. We've made a ton of capital improvements out there, lighting, path work. It's a really nice facility, and who's not ready for spring? And tigers have opened, right? So, we're ready to have our facility go in full tilt. So, we're hosting a ceremony next Wednesday night out there to kick off the season. So, hope everybody comes out to join us for that.
Play ball.
Director Homberger, you just missed your, your section. Sorry. Deputy Supervisor, have you had anything to add?
Nobody sued us lately.
There you go.
So that's good news.
That is good. Knock on wood. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything to board your comments about things happening?
My thoughts.
Oh, okay, it's okay. Oh, no.
Apologies for, my last meeting went longer than I anticipated, so I apologize for that.
That's okay. Thank you. Emma, do you want to add anything? What's going on with the residents? Or anything you're hearing?
Oh, I hear her a lot from our residents every day. Many have questions and concerns about the new waste hauler contract, so really looking forward to the neighborhood know-how, answering some of those questions, and to scheduling future meetings to put some of those concerns at rest. Also, want to say, we had a really great turnout of Canton residents at Eagles' public hearing last week. It was wonderful to see our community coming together after experiencing the flooding event and seeing them advocate for themselves with that proposed Salem Township wastewater treatment plan. So, good things happening around the township, but really a lot of positive feedback from residents. Looking forward to the spring and more projects starting and sharing more information with residents about that.
And Emma did send out information through, you're sending out information through the DDA, and to let all the Ford Road Boulevard businesses know about the MDOT on April 17 to come and, you know, look at the models. It's also online, too, so you don't have to wait to go, go there. Very good. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, board comment. Kate?
So, our last meeting, which was April 2nd, was World Autism Day, and I just wanted to mention today that April is Autism Acceptance Month, and it's a time to celebrate the diversity and strength of people with autism spectrum disorder.
Thank you. Treasurer Slaven?
And again, reminding everybody about Earth Day on April 22nd. If you get the opportunity to plant a tree or something, that would be wonderful. And also, a lot of us were able to experience the eclipse yesterday. I know they were passing glasses out at the summit, and then I know a lot of people at the admin building, right, right before the eclipse was to occur, we all ran out and looked out, looked through our glasses, and there were some residents coming in to pay bills, and so we let them use the glasses. So it was a fun time yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ganguly?
Yeah, I drove into Ohio and did my five hours commute back, but it was magnificent to watch the total solar eclipse there. And, you know, I've never seen a full solar eclipse ever in my life, so it was a first, something to strike off my bucket list. And I also wanted to wish everyone in the Muslim community, I think tomorrow is going to be probably Eid, so either tomorrow or the day after, based on the viewing of the moon. So, Eid Mubarak. And there's a lot of people in the Indian community who are celebrating New Year's in this week and the next week, so wishing all of them a Happy New Year. And then there's Vesakhi coming up, so there's a lot of, you know, based on all the things that are hap, people are celebrating in the next few weeks. And of course, we have Art in the Bloom coming at the end of the month. I'm very excited about it. As a member of the Cultural Commission, I'm volunteering there, so come and participate.
Yep, happy Yugadi and happy Vesakhi, like you said. Also, the Canton Chamber is going to be putting on an event tomorrow with, let's see what time it is. It's basically, it's going to be held in this room, and it's how to have the businesses learn about some of our cultures. We've already done one on the Muslim and Sikh community and learning how the businesses could sell to those communities. The one tomorrow is on the Latino community and the African-American community, holidays and events. And it's at 2:00 in the boardroom. All right.
When is the neighborhood?
The neighborhood know-how is on Thursday. It's right after, so you're going to be going from, what time is it at? 6:00. 6:00. Neighborhood know-how.
6:00.
At the summit, and we're going to be talking about three things. Ordnance building and trash, the waste hauler. Okay, great. All right, time to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slaven, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.